Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this business meeting of Bloomington City Council to order. Tonight is Monday, October 4th, 2021. We will begin our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening to everyone here in the chambers and everybody watching at home. Appreciate your being with us tonight. Mr. Briller, if you could please call the roll call of the council.
Baloga?
Present.
Carter?
Present.
Coulter?
Present.
Lohman?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Bussie?
Here.
Let the record show all seven members of the Bloomington City Council are present this evening. Next item on our agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Counsel, do we have any updates or changes or corrections to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
On a motion and a second by Councilmember Lohman to approve tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this matter? Mr. Briller.
Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We have our agenda, and we will move on now to item four on our agenda, which is the public comment period. It's a 20-minute period at each council meeting where we allow members of the public to come forward and address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. We do start with item 4.1, which is a response to the prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Verbrugge.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. No response to any prior comments.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Verbrugge? Hearing none, we'll move on. Item 4.2 is the public comment period itself. Again, as I said, a 20-minute period where members of the public are allowed to address the council on items not on tonight's meeting. We do limit each individual to five minutes, and we have the clock ready to roll to keep people within that five-minute limit. Questions from the council will be clarification only, and it isn't a back-and-forth. It's an opportunity for the council to listen rather than talk and respond. So we will move forward. We had one person call ahead and ask to speak tonight. Ms. Sally Ness asked if she could speak to the council again this evening. Ms. Ness, please come forward.
Thank you. Can I get the overhead? All right. Previously, I mentioned-
Sally, if we could just be official, if we could have you identify yourself and sign in so we have you for the record. Thank you so much.
Sally Ness?
Thank you.
Previously, I mentioned that the Eighth Circuit opinion for Ness versus City of Bloomington stated in August 2018, someone lodged a formal complaint against Ness for possible violations of the harassment statute. And as I stated before, I spoke with four children who approached me after one said my first and last name. A year later, the person called the police on me again because I took one six-second video to document the danger posed to park patrons by the private business school use. I did not harass anyone. The next incident, the opinion mentions states, "In August 2019, Bloomington police officers approached Ness while she was video recording activities relating to alleged violations of the joint use agreement near the center. The officers were investigating harassment, three complaint filed by Success Academy and the parent of a student. The officers warned Ness that she could be arrested for violating the harassment statute of children threatened."
Mr. Baloga, hold on one second, please. Councilmember Baloga, could you just pause a minute just?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse the interruption, but I believe that this has been discussed in previous council meetings, and I believe the rules of procedure for the city council prohibit a reiteration of the same information as an ongoing basis. So is there something new to be presented here?
Yes, this here is about a different incident. I had to start with something so people who have no idea what's going on, that they would be informed. So yes, you have not heard this at all, this incident at all. You have not heard this at all. The one I'm going into, you have not heard it. I have not presented it before. Nothing, none of this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Please continue.
If children felt threatened or intimidated by her filming, regardless of her intent, according to Officer Myers' report, he asked Ness to stop filming. This complaint is filed by the same person who previously called the police on me twice before. I was in my car over 400 feet away from where students are being dropped off. Students exit east side of the bus car while I am on the west side. When the bus cars drive by, usually it is only the top of student heads that are visible. Documentation is of the parking lot. So if by chance a student could see over a window, they would not have seen a phone-out recording, and therefore unlikely children felt threatened or intimidated by filming. I am approached by an officer while in my car in the neighbor's driveway. The neighbor tells the officer I have permission to be there. The officer asks, "You know why we're here?" I say, "No." The officer says, "They were concerned because you're over here taking pictures and stuff. I'm letting you know, so that's why we're here." The officer says, "They are here because I'm taking pictures." But the report states, "Vehicle crossed the street taking pictures of students," and wanted to make sure it was noted. They believe this female planning on being violent. The officer never mentioned concern about violence. The officer states they're viewing it as intimidation, and if you're doing it to intimidate them. I reply, "I'm definitely not doing it to intimidate them." Again, I was over 400 feet away, and so far away the patrons of A201 Park came over to where I was parked to record me. Patrons likely needed to come over to my car to record me because I was over 400 feet away and likely too far to get a picture of me, yet they called the police and stated I was taking pictures of students. There were three men who recorded me. One man who parked in the north entrance, two who recorded in front of me, one from a van, another from the street. The men were close enough to note that I was documenting with a cellphone and not a high-powered lens. Again, they needed to come over to where I was parked over 400 feet away to get a picture of me unless they came over to where I was parked for another reason, such as to intimidate me, like when they follow me in the park or home or sit in their vehicles outside my home and record me. Three men came over to where I was parked to take pictures of me while I sat in my car, and yet the person who called the police on me wanted to make sure it was noted that they believe this female is planning on being violent. This person who called the police on me for the third time, the same person who greeted me at the planning commission meeting, who came over to say hi at the playground, falsely reported female is planning on being violent. That should not happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Is there anyone else in the council chambers who would like to address the council tonight during the public comment period? Do we, Riza, do we have anyone on the phone who would like to speak to item 4.2 on our agenda, the public comment period?
No question at this time.
All right, last call for anybody in the council chambers to come forward. No one on the line and no one coming forward in the council chambers, so we will close tonight's public comment period and move on to item five on our agenda, which is the introductory items, and item 5.1, which is the introduction of new employees. We've been doing this for a few weeks now and get a chance to catch up on the employees who were new during the pandemic, and we didn't get a chance to say hello to them because we obviously weren't in the council chambers. Tonight, we've got Carl Keel, our Public Works Director, and members of the Public Works staff who are here this evening to say hello. Mr. Keel.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. As the mayor noted, we have a number of new Public Works employees that we'd like to introduce this evening. Maybe I'll just go through them by divisions, and we'll start with Christian. Christian Anagel. Christian is a civil engineer, joins us from the city of Minneapolis and works in our engineering department, obviously. He is one of the people that are responsible for the design and the building of all the public improvements that we do in engineering, so we're very happy to have him. Christian was born and raised in Benin, West Africa, and he came to the United States in 2015. He is a member of the Air Reserve, US Air Reserve, and is currently working on his master's degree in civil engineering. I think kind of a fun fact is that Christian is fluent in French. He learned English by watching movies and by reading books and probably by watching city council meetings, I suppose. But anyhow, so Christian.
Good evening, Christian.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Like I said, I'm Christian Anagel. Really happy to be here and join this great community of the city of Bloomington and looking forward to, you know, contribute to the improvements and the betterment of the lives in the community. And yes, that's it for me. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Welcome aboard, and thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
The next couple folks are all folks in our utilities department, and these are utility operators and maintenance workers. As I noted at our last meeting, these are the folks that take care of our sewer and water and are the people that respond in the middle of the night for water main breaks or if there's sewer backups and the ongoing cleaning of our sewer systems. So the first is Sam Klin. Stan's a maintenance worker. Thank you, Sam. He started with us this summer. He's been in this field for about three years. He's had taken classes in economics at the U of M. He's a resident here in Bloomington where he enjoys coaching his kids in hockey and playing hockey himself, right? Yep. Sam.
He has a t-shirt to prove it. Well, I don't really have a whole lot to say, but it's just like, you know, living in Bloomington here has been great for me. I've been here for at least 17 years and finally got a job working for Bloomington, which is a city I love, so it's great to work for the place you live in, so it's nice to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, Sam. Nice to meet you.
Also in utilities is Adam Chappi. Chappi, he's corrected me three times so far on that one. Adam grew up in Faribault on a dairy farm, currently actually still farms with his dad where they have over 100 cattle, a mix of beef cattle and of dairy cattle. Comes to us as a manager from Semstone down in Northfield. He enjoys, among other things, collecting old shotguns and repairing tractors, and old tractors.
Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to work for you. It's been, I've been here since January, so it's been here quite a while already. It's been really nice. It's a nice area. I like the, like the, just the outline of the whole city. It's really nice, and I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you, Sam. Glad to, glad to have you on board and look forward to continuing to see you in front of the council on a variety of things if we get the chance or waving to you when you're out on the streets. Thank you.
Next is Hunter Kargela. Hunter is a resident in Chesapeake. He's been working in this industry for a number of years, came from an underground utility company before he came here, enjoys working outdoors and recreating outdoors, spends his free time with cycling and spending time with friends and family.
Hunter.
Just like to thank you guys for the opportunities and look forward to working for you guys and a long career.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your work. Welcome.
Now we will move on to our facilities group. Mark Presser. There he goes, behind me. So he's the newest employee in our facilities section and is a service technician with that group, comes with us with kind of special expertise in cabinetry and in HVAC systems. Mark.
Hi, council. Pleasure to work for you and appreciate the opportunities.
Very good. Hello to you. Thanks. Welcome.
Good. So our last employee to introduce is someone in our parks department or our parks group, Mike Sullivan, and he is actually with us remotely. So Mike, are you up there?
Ah, yes.
In MS. So Mike is, he's a new employee in Public Works. I wouldn't say he's a new employee to the city. He has worked for a number of years. He worked at our golf courses, and then more recently kind of joined our crew as a park maintenance worker in Public Works. So Mike comes to us with a degree in environmental geography from the University of Minnesota. As I noted, he was worked as a groundskeeper at Dwan for a number of years, and we're actually very pleased to have him kind of permanently over in Public Works. I think Mike has spent a lot of time at the city and even in Public Works. He was always part of our plowing crew in the winter for the past couple of years, so we're very excited to have him kind of as a regular employee with us. So Mike?
Yeah, I'm glad to be back, excited to work at the city, something new.
Well, welcome, Mike. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all. Appreciate you all and appreciate you as employees in our Public Works Department. We absolutely do. And Christian, thank you much. Sam, Adam, Hunter?
Mayor, if I could-
Oh, please.
Elite show. Elite show. But he got dressed up, which is a good deal. This is Roger Rudstrom. He's a utility worker also, but it works in our water plant. So he is one of the people that are responsible for providing our award-winning water.
Roger, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words?
I will. I apologize. I was, my motorcycle ended up being, having an error code, so I got sidetracked, and then the notification came up on my calendar, and my wife came up, she says, "You're supposed to be at the city council meeting." And I ran, I was like, "Oh, shoot." So I really apologize. I'm, you look at my track record, I'm never late. So, yeah. Anyways, I'm Roger Rudstrom, and yeah, I work at the water treatment plant. I really appreciate the opportunity to work here. I've been enjoying everything about it and learning a lot, and I just really appreciate the opportunity. I came from working at Pepsi as a bulk delivery driver, and once again, thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you again.
Welcome to all of you. Thank you very much. As somebody who spent a summer sewer jetting sewers in Sartell, Minnesota during college, I appreciate the work that you do and understand the work that goes into it to keeping everything underground and above ground and the nuts and bolts kind of stuff running. So thank you all very much. Greatly appreciated. Nice to meet you all. Hope to see you again soon. Thank you. Item six on our agenda is our consent agenda, and Councilmember Baloga, you have our consent business tonight.
I do, Mr. Mayor, and I have not heard from anybody with any holds, so I will give that last call. Any holds? Not hearing any. We have a rather small consent agenda. There are five items, the fifth of which is the approval of the council minutes from prior meetings, and I move items 6.1 through 6.5.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Baloga, a second by Councilmember Coulter to accept this evening's consent business. No further council discussion on this? Mr. Briller.
Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
And Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item seven on our agenda are hearings, ordinances, and resolutions, and tonight we have five public hearings, and we will start with our first public hearing, which is a hearing to adopt the resolution approving the assessment role 2021-1. And Brian Hanson from our development coordinator, and I believe Darren Rezak, civil engineer, are going to lead us through this. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Check, check. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Brian Hanson. As you mentioned, I'm the development coordinator here in Public Works and Engineering, and I'm joined tonight by Darren Rezak, the project engineer, and we're going to give a short presentation here on the assessment role for the 2021 PMP project. Now Darren, start off with some construction comments.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of council. Can I get the next slide, please? All right, so what you see on there is a couple, some of the dates, the key dates for our property owner contact. So initially, we sent mailers to initial assessment notices to properties that were going to be on the reconstruct project. Included in there, we also had information for our informational meetings as well as the, excuse me, public hearing. We did hold two public hearing, or excuse me, two property owner informational meetings for the project on the 28th and 29th of October, as well as this ended up going to two council meetings for the public hearing. Prior to construction, we also send out construction mailers, which kind of gives residents a kind of an idea of some of the construction activities and what's going to be happening, as well as contact info for city staff that are going to be helping out on the project. We sent the final assessment notices middle of September, and then we held two property owner informational meetings more specific to the assessments at Public Works on the 28th. And that brings us to tonight, the public hearing for the assessments. So the pavement, pavement, excuse me, pavement management program was initially started in 1991, and what that does is we use a method called the pavement condition index, and what that does is it basically gives each street segment a numerical value between 100 and 0. With 100 being a brand-new street and a 0 being a street that's kind of, has no more usable life in it. And with that, city staff that are trained in identifying PCIs and assessing those, they inspect about a third of the city each year, and so what we do is we take that PCIs that they have compiled, and that allows us to forecast future years for projects. So every year, we, engineering staff as well as the maintenance staff go through and we put together our five-year CIP map. So that includes our reconstruct projects as well as our overlay projects. Street segments that are, you know, identified as recon or that are identified as overlays are also bundled together into two larger projects, one being the overlay and one being the recon. And that does, and what that does is it provides an economy of scale, obviously lowers assessments for the individual property owners, as well as lowers the city's portion that we contribute for the projects. And then at the bottom there, we see the cost share as well as our special assessment percentages. So single and two-family homes, they're assessed at 25% of the cost, and then all other properties are assessed at 50%. And we do have two separate assessments. So streets that don't have curb and gutter are assessed a curbing assessment, and then streets that don't have curb and gutter and then also have existing curb and gutter are assessed a surfacing assessment, so. So the reconstruct project is the assessment hearing that we're here for tonight, and that's your, kind of your atypical construction project, and that is the removal of the existing pavement down to the subgrade. We do storm sewer insulation if the street segment needs it, and that is hired out by a third-party contractor. The overlay portion of the project is essentially what they do is they kind of grind down the top inch to two inches of pavement and coat that with a new layer of asphalt over the top, and that is also completed by a third-party contractor. And then the seal coat, as well as trail maintenance, are done by our in-house maintenance staff, and then trail construction, we typically contract that out to a third-party. And numbers-wise, we do about four to four and a half miles of reconstruct every year. We do about nine to 10 miles of the overlay every year, and the seal coat is about 30 miles every year. So what you see here, two visualizations. So the visualization on the left is a street segment that isn't part of the city's PMP, so prior to the pavement management program being implemented. So what you do is you'd have a new street that was reconstructed, and we would rate that as a PCI of 100, and then obviously over time, that would degrade down to a 0 PCI with no more usable life, and the project would, you know, need to be restarted and reconstructed. And then the visualization on the right is kind of a depiction of how we manage the streets now. So the PCIs that are in the 65 to 100, we would use a seal coat method. PCIs that are the 35 to 65 would be the overlay, and then anything less than 35 is what we would do on a reconstruct project.
Thanks, Darren. I'm going to see if I can utilize the technology here and so I don't have to hunch over on this microphone.
You're not as short as me.
That's as high as it goes, I guess. All right, I'll make do. I'm going to talk a little bit about the actual special assessments ourselves at this point. So Minnesota State Statute 429 is what gives cities or municipalities the right to assess for certain improvement projects, such as the PMP project, as Darren mentioned. The city's policy has been in place since 1962, our methodology for assessing properties for these types of projects, and the city's basis for the assessment calculations is using an AFF or adjusted front footage. So the idea behind that is to equate all lots regardless of shape into a rectangular lot. So we try to make the assessments equitable to all properties regardless of the shape of the lot. It's more of a function of the area of the lot. So a larger area lot may be subject to a larger AFF, in turn, a larger assessment possibly. Other cities use special assessments to pay for certain improvements, and the methodology used varies from city to city, but per the state statute, you have to apply the methodology equally throughout all properties, which we do in the city here with the AFF methodology. If we can go back one, there you go. Thank you. So for this year's project, for the 2021 PMP, the total project cost came in at just over $7 million, and as Darren mentioned, that included surfacing, curb and gutter work, utility work, and traffic improvements as well. Only surfacing and curb and gutter were the only improvements that properties were subject to an assessment for, again, depending on if there was already curb and gutter in place or not. So this year, with surfacing, the total surfacing cost for that improvement came in at just under $4 million. So you can see that 100% rate, if we were to take the total cost of the surfacing divided by the total AFF of all properties that were subject to a surfacing assessment, we get 100% rates. That would be the rate that we would need to assess property owners to cover 100% of the cost of the surfacing. As Darren mentioned, we assess at that 25% and 50% rate depending on the type of property. So you can see the math, how that works out to get to that 6171 for the 50% rate for surfacing and that 3086 for the 25% rate. So doing the same math again for the curb and gutter, you see that cost came in at just under $1.9 million for the total improvement cost. You'll notice that the AFF or that 21,824 you see there is a lower number than that 32,345 above for surfacing. Again, that's because not all properties that were subject to a surfacing assessment were subject to a curb and gutter assessment because there was curb and gutter in place on some segments. So doing that math again, you see the breakdown for the 50% and 25% rate. I do want to point out in the cost breakdown that was included with the agenda item, if you were to do the math across for all of the, the total AFF times the rate for the curb and gutter and surfacing for that 50% rate, the numbers won't equal out, and that's because we did adjust the assessment rates for two properties at a previous council meeting based on the special benefit that those properties were received from the assessment. So we adjusted those assessments down, which is why those numbers don't equate, but that was an artificial adjustment based on the special benefit consultation report, which we solicited prior to bringing the levy for council this evening. With this year's PMP project, the Park Road area, so in the cost breakdown, street segments 14 through 17 are located in what we're going to call the Park Road area. The contractor for this year's project is having issues procuring materials to finish the storm sewer work in that area. As we all know, supply chains are having issues right now, and the contractor is not able to get all of the materials on site in order to, in enough time to complete the work yet this year. So they're going to push back the work in that neighborhood until the spring of 2022. So staff is recommending delaying the levying of the assessments for those parcels on those four street segments until next year when that work is completed. So the assessment rates, the interest rate and the total assessment bill for all those properties would be locked in, so it would not change their assessment rate at all. All it would do is delay the levying of that assessment for another year until that work is completed. That, the total amount of assessments that would be delayed until next year is 333,161 and 14 cents, and that affects 51 properties would be subject to that, included in that total that would be delayed until next year. So we would be back before you next year at this time with those remaining properties as well as the 2022 PMP if it was to be ordered by the council here this year. And there are sufficient funds currently in the PMP account to cover those assessments to delay those for another year. to delay those for another year. I want to talk about payment options quickly here. So if the assessments are levied this evening by the council, all properties that are subject to an assessment would have till November 29th to pay a portion of $100 up to the total assessment amount, and no interest would be applied, so their bill would be paid in full. After November 29th, whatever balance is remaining will automatically be rolled onto the property taxes for that property, spread out evenly over 10 years, and 4.5% interest will be applied to the declining principal on an annual basis. So if a property owner were to choose to not prepay any amount of their assessment and let it all roll over onto their property tax statement, the first time they would see a bill for this assessment would be with their May 2022 property tax statement. After it's rolled onto the property tax statement, the property can pay it off in full at any time during that 10-year period if they choose, and if they do, then no further interest will be applied to the balance. If we can go forward, one more slide, please. Thank you. There's also hardship deferral for properties that qualify, and this does not forgive the assessment, but defers the assessment until the house is sold or the property owner no longer qualifies for the deferral. Interest still accrues on the balance on an annual basis while it's in the deferral status, so that's important to note. And the criteria are listed there. I will note that this, earlier this year, we did include active military personnel as a qualifying condition for this hardship deferral, which is consistent with state statute as well. And then the last thing I want to point out is there is an appeal process, again, through state statute. If a property is assessed a levy, or is levied an assessment, excuse me, and the property feels that assessment isn't warranted, they do have a process to appeal, and that goes through district court. It's not at the city level, it's at the state level. So again, just to kind of recap, the PMP program, it's the, it prolongs the pavement life, as Darren mentioned earlier. It keeps the city's infrastructure in good condition, it maintains or increases the property values of the properties here in Bloomington, and reduces the overall cost of maintenance for the streets in Bloomington. And at this time, we have a couple suggested motions as well, but happy to answer any questions that the mayor or council may have.
Thanks so very much. Council, any questions on this? I just want to point out, so the cost share program, that assessment share program, did you say it began in 1962? So we're pushing 60 years of this program in place?
Correct. The assessment program began in 1962.
Very good. And I've always appreciated how it's broken down to a 2575. Obviously, the work done in front of anybody, any individual's home, obviously, as you said, increases their property value, and they benefit from it, but they pay 25% of the cost of that. It also benefits the city of Bloomington, so the rest of the city of Bloomington taxpayers pick up an additional 75% of that. And I know there are other cities that have a special assessment at 100% if there's work done in front of your house, and I know that those bills can stack up quickly in a lot of communities, but this has been a policy decision in the city of Bloomington for 60 years now that it is, it benefits the homeowners, but it also benefits the city of Bloomington. And we think this is a fair and an equitable way of making sure that happens, and people who pay for it are benefiting. They're certainly paying, but they're also benefiting from it in the long term, so. Council, additional questions of any kind? Seeing no questions. So this officially is a public hearing on our different street sections that we will be talking about. And as we've done in the past, what I would like to do is call them one reference number at a time and see if there's anyone looking to come forward or anyone, you know what? We're going to do it this way. We'll, I'll call, see if there's anyone to come forward in the council chambers, and then we'll double back to our on-the-phone folks and see if there's anybody on the phone, and do it more as a group thing, see if anybody's there. But we'll maintain the formality as we have done in past, in the past, looking to see if there's anybody there. So is there anyone who wishes to speak in this public hearing to reference number one, which is West 108th Street, Johnson Avenue to France Avenue? Seeing no one coming forward, and we'll move on to reference number two, Vincent Avenue, the street named Vincent Avenue from Thomas Avenue to West 82nd Street. Reference number three, Upton Avenue from Sheraton Place to West 82nd Street. Reference number four, Thomas Avenue, West 84th Street to West 82nd Street. Reference number five, Sheraton Avenue from Sheraton Place to West 82nd Street. Reference number six, Russell Avenue, West 84th Street to West 82nd Street. Number seven, Queen Avenue, Penn Avenue, County State Highway 32 to West 82nd Street. Reference number eight, Sheraton Place is the street from Thomas Avenue to Russell Avenue. Reference number nine, West 82nd Street, Xerxes Avenue to Russell Avenue. Section number 10, West 86th Street, Gerard Avenue to Lyndale Avenue. Section 11, Elliott Avenue, East Old Chocopey Road to East 94th Street. Section 12, East 96th Street, Columbus Avenue to Elliott Avenue. Section 13, East 98th Street, Chicago Avenue to Del Ridge Road. Section 14, Park Road, that will go from 12th Avenue to 15th Avenue. Section 15, East 88th Street, 13th Avenue to 14th Avenue. Section 16, 13th Avenue, Park Road to East 88th Street. And section 17, 14th Avenue, East 99th Street to East 86th Street. I saw no one coming forward here in the council chambers to speak on any of these issues on item 7.1, our public hearing regarding the resolution approving street assessment roles. Carolyn, do we have anyone on the telephone? Or Riza, do we have anyone on the telephone who wishes to speak to item 7.1? Riza, anyone looking to speak to item 7.1?
No one's on the phone. You may continue.
So we have no one coming forward on any of these, and we have no one on the phone who wishes to speak at this public hearing on item 7.1. Last call for anyone? Seeing no one coming forward. Council, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing tonight.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Carter to close the public hearing on item 7.1. Hearing no further council discussion, Mr. Brillart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0, closing the public hearing. Council, any discussion on this? Any further comments, concerns? If not, I would look for action, and the suggested motions detailing out items, segments 14 through 17 are on the screen.
Mayor, I'm happy to make those motions.
Councilmember Martin.
And just to clarify, are these going to need two separate votes, or can we do these together?
I believe we will need two separate motions here.
Okay. Mayor, I will move that we adopt a resolution approving assessment role 2021-1, street reference segments 1 through 13.
Second.
And a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Carter to adopt the resolution approving assessment role 2021-1, the street reference segments 1 through 13. Hearing no further council discussion on this, Mr. Brillart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Martin.
Mayor, I move to delay the levying of assessments for the 2021 PMP reconstruction project for street reference segments 14 through 17 until 2022, with the assessments, assessment rates, interest rate, and total assessment amounts locked in as provided with the 2021 PMP notice of public hearing letter mailed on September 14th, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Carter to delay the levying of street reference segments 14 to 17 as stated. Hearing no further council discussion on this, Mr. Brillart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much, and certainly understandable on the, on the materials issue. It's, I think, affecting a lot of people in a lot of different ways, so thank you for that clarification and make sure that everybody knows that, the situation in those parts of the city, appreciate it. Moving on to item 7.2, another public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding park rules ordinance amendment, and our city attorney, Melissa Manderscheid, will be taking the lead on this. Ms. Manderscheid.
Thank you, mayor members. Tonight, we have before you a public hearing on the title Park Rules Ordinance Amendment. Specifically, this item, before the council if adopted, would remove section 5.21 subdivision 23 from the city code. It's one sentence long. It currently appears in the section of the city code that applies to city parks. The packet includes a full copy of the proposed amendment and one paragraph description about it. The description is brief, that's intentional. We are in litigation on this, on related matters, and so it's with that introduction that I turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you. Council, any questions of Ms. Manderscheid? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on item 7.2. This is a public hearing on the park rules ordinance amendment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to item 7.2 at tonight's meeting?
Can I get the overhead?
Good evening again, Ms. Ness.
Thank you. The city stated in that paragraph, these, this park rule in the city code is more trouble than it is worth, and that concerns me. Is this statement indicating support for the city code restricting photography regardless that it is unconstitutional? Quote from Attorney Robert Muse, "The First Amendment fully protects our client's right to gather information through photographing and videotaping. And this is particularly this, the case here because she is filming public matters related to a public controversy. As the courts have explained, the right to freedom of speech includes not only the actual expression of one's views, thoughts, opinions, and other information concerning matters of public interest, but also non-expressive conduct that interestfully facilitates one's ability to exercise free speech rights, including effort to gather evidence and information by photographing and videotaping. Here, the city and county seek to make a crime out of what under the Constitution cannot be a crime. Their threats of prosecution are aimed directly at activity protected by the First Amendment." Example of what the city made a crime, teenagers taking pictures in the park without parent permission. The Eighth Circuit judge asked the question, "If two students stopped at the park to take pictures, would they need parent permission?" And the answer was yes. Another example, another example, appearing to take a picture of a child. "I am standing here with my phone. Am I taking a picture or am I texting someone? Am I taking a picture of a council member or a background? How would someone know that a person is taking a picture of a child without permission or taking a picture to the left, right, above, below? You do not know without looking at the picture." The Eighth Circuit judge asked, "How do you know if it is a picture of a child versus an adult without considering content?" The response was that a child would say, "This person put a camera right next to me, pressing the button," or an adult would say they witnessed a person taking a picture of a child. That a jury would not have to see a photograph to convict someone. If a photograph was taken in front of many witnesses and deleted, it is still taking a photograph. Again, did I take a picture of a council member? Which one? And if not, what did I take a picture of? In August 2018, the incident where four children approached me and one says my first and last name, the report inaccurately states harassing a group of juveniles by videotaping them at the park. And she believed Ness was recording them, and Ness had some sort of camera attached to her shirt, which she thought might be her phone. A child inaccurately said I was videotaping them at the park, and the city believes that regardless that no video was taken, that a jury would not have to see a photograph to convict. That should be a concern to all residents. The city also stated, "In part, the Minnesota legislator has amended the state harassment statute in a way that bolsters the statute's constitutionality." Is this statement indicating support for the previous state harassment statute that was unconstitutional under the First Amendment that did not include intent? From Ness versus City of Bloomington, the harassment statute, facially and as applied to plaintiff Ness's express activity as set forth in this complaint, is vague and overbroad in violation of the First Amendment. This is the previous harassment statute. Definition, as used in this section, harass means to engage in intentional conduct which the actor knows or has reason to know would cause the victim, under the circumstances, to feel frightened, threatened, oppressed, prosecuted, intimidated, and causes this reaction the part of the victim. No proof of specific intent required. Again, in 2018, four children approached me and one said my first and last name, and a citation was written based on a report that they were afraid. I was being neighborly, talking to children who lived behind me, as I have previously, and because it is reported that they were afraid, a citation was written for harassment and stalking. Talking to children is not harassment, and talking to them while they, while remaining on the playground is not stalking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to item 7.2 on tonight's agenda? Anyone to speak to item 7.2? Riza, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item 7.2?
No one's on the line. Please continue.
Council, we have no one on the line wishing to speak. We have no one coming forward in the council chambers. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Coulter to close the public hearing on item 7.2. Hearing no further council discussion, Mr. Brillart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0, closing the public hearing on item 7.2. Council, any further discussion on this? Questions, clarifications at all? If not, I would look for action, council.
Mayor, I'm happy to make this first motion.
Councilmember Martin.
Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance, an ordinance amending chapter 5 of the city code related to parks and playgrounds.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Coulter to adopt the ordinance amending chapter 5 of the city code related to parks and playgrounds. Hearing no further council discussion, Mr. Brillart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Martin, summary publication?
Mayor, I move that we approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of the ordinance, an ordinance amending chapter 5 of the city code related to parks and playgrounds.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Coulter for summary publication on item 7.2. Hearing no further council discussion, Mr. Brillart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Moving on, item 7.3, another public hearing this evening. This is for a new on-sale intoxicating liquor license for First Round Minnesota LLC, doing business as First Round, and they were, they are in 5115 Center Court in Bloomington here. Mr. Junker, are you with us this evening? There he is. Good evening, Mr. Junker.
There I am. Evening, mayor, council, yes. First round, moving into the previous Hard Rock Cafe down in the park, down in the middle of the mall. Everything's checked out, and we're looking for your approval.
Council, any questions of Mr. Junker? Hearing no questions. This is a public hearing, and I would like to open the public hearing on item 7.3 for a new on-sale intoxicating liquor license for First Round. Anyone in the council chambers looking to speak regarding item 7.3? Seeing no one coming forward. Riza, is there anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item 7.3?
No one's on the line. Please continue.
Council, no one on the line, no one coming forward to speak to item 7.3. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Carter to close tonight's Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Carter to close tonight's public hearing on item 7.3. Hearing no further counsel discussion. Mr. Brillart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Public hearing is closed on item 7.3.
Counsel, I'd look for action on this.
Mayor, I can make this motion.
Councilmember Coulter.
I will move to approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor license for First Round Minnesota LLC, doing business as First Round, located at 5115 Center Court, Bloomington, 55425.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Carter to approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor license for First Round Minnesota LLC. Hearing no further counsel discussion on this. Mr. Brillart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item 7.4. Another public hearing. This is for a new on-sale wine and three-two malt beverage license for the Cherrywood Room. Mr. Junker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, the Cherrywood Room. This is a part of the Cherrywood Complex. It's a senior living complex. They added a restaurant in there, and they're looking for adding now some beer and wine. There's only a handful of these in the state, so this is the first one for us here in Bloomington. And everything's checked out. Again, looking for your approval.
Thank you. Counsel, questions of Mr. Junker on this? Seeing no questions, I will open the public hearing on item 7.4. Public hearing for a new on-sale wine and three-two malt beverage license for the Cherrywood Room. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to item 7.4? Anyone wishing to speak to item 7.4? Riza, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item 7.4?
No one's on the line. Please continue.
Thank you. Counsel, no one on the line, no one coming forward here in the chambers to speak to item 7.4. I'd look for a motion to close this public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
That's correct.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Carter to close tonight's public hearing on item 7.4. And no further counsel discussion. Mr. Brillart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item 7.4. Counsel, I'd look for action on item 7.4.
Mayor, I can-
Councilmember Coulter.
Move to approve the on-sale wine and 3.2% malt beverage licenses for Unidine Corporation, doing business as Cherrywood Room, 5501 American Boulevard West, Bloomington, Minnesota, 55437.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Carter to approve the on-sale wine and three-two malt beverage license for the Cherrywood Room. Hearing no further counsel discussion on this. Mr. Brillart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Our final public hearing for the evening is item 7.5, which is for a new therapeutic massage enterprise license for Sankalpa Therapy and Wellness Center. Mr. Junker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. Sankalpa Therapy and Wellness, established therapy center here in Bloomington, and the owner has asked to add some massage to her offer. So she's presented this to us, and everything, again, is checked out, so we're looking for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Junker. I apologize. Sankalpa? Am I saying that correctly?
I think it's Sankalpa.
Sankalpa. Thank you. Sankalpa. Thank you. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Junker on this? Hearing no questions, I will open the public hearing on item 7.5 for a new therapeutic massage enterprise license for Sankalpa Therapy and Wellness Center. Anyone wishing to speak to item 7.5 this evening? Anyone wishing to speak? Riza, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item 7.5 this evening?
No one's on the line. Please continue.
Thank you. Counsel, no one coming forward in the chambers, no one on the line wishing to speak to item 7.5. I'd look for a motion to close tonight's public hearing on this.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter, a second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item 7.5. Hearing no further counsel discussion. Mr. Brillart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item 7.5.
Counsel, I'd look for action on 7.5.
I can do that.
Councilmember Carter.
I would move the approval of the therapeutic massage enterprise license for Minnesota Counseling and Therapy Center, doing business as Sankalpa Therapy and Wellness Center, 140 West 98th Street, Suite 105, Bloomington, Minnesota, 55420.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, a second by Councilmember Martin to approve the therapeutic massage enterprise license for the Minnesota Counseling and Therapy Center, doing business as Sankalpa Therapy and Wellness Center. Hearing no further counsel discussion. Mr. Brillart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Junker. Appreciate it once again. We will move on to our item eight on our agenda, our organizational business. And we will start with item 8.1, which is a presentation on our Sustainable Bulky Item Management Program, and we will have public comment on this as well. So welcoming tonight, Ellen Bialis from our Public Works Department and Laura Horner from our Public Works Project Coordinator. And they're going to lead us through the Sustainable Bulky Item Management Plan. Good evening. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor Bussie and council members. As the mayor mentioned, I'm Ellen Bialis, the Deputy Director of Public Works. And with me this evening is Laura Horner, our Project Coordinator for Solid Waste and Recycling. And we're here this evening to seek your permission to proceed forward with a new plan for handling bulky materials in Bloomington. Next slide, please, Carolyn. To start us off, I wanted to share a brief reminder of how we came to be proposing a new framework for handling these materials. In 2019, the city council directed the Sustainability Commission to study the environmental footprint of our spring curbside cleanup program. They asked us to do that in order to make the program more environmentally beneficial, reduce the impacts of the program, and yet still maintain a high-quality, accessible service for residents to remove bulky items. In 2020, after a year of studying the issues and researching potential strategies, the Sustainability Commission proposed a new model to the city council that included vouchers for one or two bulky items to be left at the curb and the start of one or two community drop-off events that would be open and accessible to all Bloomington residents. In the spring of 2021, that proposed model was shared with the community in a robust community engagement campaign. Laura will share a few more details about that in a minute. But following that outreach, staff and Sustainability Commission's Solid Waste Working Group members reviewed the community feedback, conducted additional research related to the management of bulky items in other cities, and refined recommendations for sustainable management of bulky items. The updated recommendation was shared with the Joint City Council and Sustainability Commission Solid Waste Working Group in July of 2021. The updated model was also shared with the community again in August of 2021 through community listening session, through an e-subscribe, and on Let's Talk Bloomington. You will recall that we shared the details of that proposal as an informational item just three weeks ago here at the council. And since that time, the Full Sustainability Commission has reviewed the framework that is before you this evening and gave their unanimous recommendation to proceed forward with the program elements. Laura will share with you a few more details about what we heard during our community engagement and how what we heard translated into what we're proposing to you this evening. Laura?
So, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Laura Horner, and I'm the Public Works Project Coordinator. So as Ellen mentioned, in our original proposal, we conducted a broad public engagement outreach campaign that utilized several different methods for engagement. Those included a Let's Talk Bloomington page, two citywide listening sessions, focused conversations with BIPOC community leaders and Creekside seniors, and direct phone conversations and emails from residents. That Let's Talk Bloomington page was most widely utilized. And as you can see, we had over 4,000 people visit that page and over 1,400 participate on a survey on this topic. So with that, and given the volume of feedback we received, we realized that it's clear that there is a lot of, you know, engagement on this topic. So after taking a closer look at the feedback we received and really evaluating that and considering additional observations, we decided to go back to the drawing board. We wanted to make sure that we were designing a program that fit with the values that we originally set out to achieve in this plan, but also to incorporate what we had heard and learned through our engagement process. So the result of that process, again, is the recommendation that we are presenting this evening, which I will walk through in just a moment. But we did take this updated proposal back to the community this summer in August. We again utilized the Let's Talk Bloomington page, as well as held another citywide listening session on the topic. And the responses received during that listening session were supportive of this new proposal overall. Again, we do know that the feedback we received comes from just a small section of the community and that with any changes that we ultimately make, it is very important that we do a broad engagement and education process in any program changes. So at this time, I'll walk through our updated recommendation that does include several different program components. So first, we're recommending holding what we're calling a reimagined curbside cleanup every other year. And we would limit the items that are accepted during that event. So any small item that could fit in a resident's large garbage cart would not be accepted. We think that doing an event similar to what we have done in the past does address residents' concerns we heard about vehicle access, and it still keeps the program convenient and allows some opportunity for remaging. And overall, will still reduce the cost of the program since the event will be held every other year. It also addresses our concerns related to the level of material that is sent to the landfill as those smaller items can be managed through their weekly garbage program, where the garbage is sent to the waste-to-energy facility rather than landfill. So the second program component is to hold a drop-off event for recyclable materials that would be held every year. This element of the plan would be open to multifamily residents to participate in some recycling activities, and it also encourages reuse of some items that could be collected at these sorts of events. The third component of the plan would be to hold a regular curbside pickup for reusable and recyclable bulky items only. And this would be something residents would call and schedule. However, they would always know their regular day that they could put those items out in advance. We think that this addresses the concern we heard about, again, not having access to vehicles. It would remain a convenient option for residents. And it also addresses concern we heard from some residents about needing to hold on to their items for a long time to dispose of them. Fourth, the city would hold one or two swap events each year where residents could come and exchange certain types of items, like sporting goods, toys, or gardening tools, in an effort to kind of further promote the reuse of those items as well as create new community events within Bloomington. And lastly, overall, we heard from folks that they would like more education overall and how to dispose of items throughout the year. So our plan does include more of a robust engagement and education plan year-round. So these are the key recommendations for the program that we see going forward. We do think that it provides a good opportunity for residents to get rid of those items that truly are garbage, but also to put those items to a better use through convenient recycling and reuse. And when looking at, you know, which proposal allows us to meet the council's priorities overall, we do think that this new proposal more closely aligns with those priorities. And also, it importantly takes into consideration some of those main concerns that we heard from residents in our original proposal. So with that, we have prepared suggested action, and we are happy to take any questions or comments from the council.
Thank you. As they said, we did discuss this a couple of weeks back and had some good feedback, I think, and some good discussion on it. Any additional questions, counsel? Anything to add to the discussion we had a few weeks back? None? We have set this up where we have organized this as a public comment opportunity for folks. Goodness knows there's been plenty of public comment opportunities for people, and they've certainly taken advantage of that, but we wanted to make sure that they had one more opportunity with the council present to look at these suggested recommendations and to see if they have anything. So I will ask, is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak on this? Any comments that any residents would like to make? And if not, Riza, do we have anyone on the line who would like to speak to item 8.1?
No one's on the line. Please continue.
Well, it sounds like people talk themselves out, to be my guess. Looking at the number of bits of feedback that you did get, I think everybody had an opportunity to provide their input and their suggestions and their feedback, and goodness knows they did. So, and, I mean, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, I think that was an incredibly important part of this whole process, the feedback that you received from the community and then the changes that you made in the recommendations and the suggestions. I think that's, I can't recall something that has been modified this substantially after receiving community feedback in my time on the council. I don't recall that, that this is, and it's a very good example of it, to getting the information, hearing from folks, and realizing, okay, let's take a different look at this and kind of look at it with a different lens and see what we might come up with. And frankly, I think you've come up with something very good here. And the feedback that I've heard from people about this has been very positive, very upbeat, and a lot of thumbs up on this one. So, counsel, any questions? Councilmember Loman, from the Sustainability Commission's standpoint?
Well, Mayor, I just wanted to really amplify and echo your comments and really just thank the staff for their hard work. I know there were some difficult times. And I appreciate your willingness to pay attention to the details and really listen and even make that pivot that you guys mentioned. I think that's real notable. And it just, it's amazing to me how popular this program is and how much change we have made. Some might say, well, maybe you haven't pushed enough, but I'm not saying that at all. I think this is an excellent place to start, as we talked about at the Sustainability Commission, that this is just the beginning of this piece, and we'll go back and look at this again in some many years. But I'm amazed there's nobody here to comment on it. I don't think I've ever seen that.
I would agree, and that's a very good point, Councilmember Loman, that this isn't an endpoint. I mean, this is, I think, an evolving process as we look for ways to continue to improve it. And I appreciate your ability to look at that and bring the feedback back to us and see what we hear after a year or two of doing this. Counsel, anything? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to just echo the comments. This has been an impressive amount of work, and I know, I have heard from a number of residents how they appreciate that the feedback that's been offered has been incorporated. And I agree. I think what has resulted is, I think, ultimately a better product, at the very least, a better transition to something in the future. My only suggestion, and I'm sure it's not anything that you weren't already aware of, but looking through sort of the different components of this recommendation, I think it's going to be critically important to note what is accepted when. Because I, you know, even just reading through that, and I've seen this proposal a few times now, I was a little bit confused. So I think, you know, the more concrete you can make that, the more specific and clear you can make as to what is accepted when, what is not, what will be picked up, what won't, that kind of thing. This is a significant change, and I think that's just gonna, that the more you can do that, the easier it's going to be for everyone. So, thank you again. This has been really, really good work.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I echo the comments already made. You guys have done a fantastic job and really, really appreciate the community engagement process and your willingness to really take all of that into consideration and just kind of start from scratch. So, thank you. I just have a quick question. As we're, the point that was just made around this not being the end of the conversation made me curious what kind of metrics we're looking at as we look at cost savings and reducing the carbon footprint and all those things. And so what are we, what kind of indicators we're looking at? And then how often we're going to be kind of evaluating how this program is doing and where there might need to be adjustments? What are you thinking in terms of timing?
Sure. I think one of the main metrics that we'll be able to use to measure the success of the program is the tons of material collected, both for garbage as well as then what we can pick up for recycling and reuse. So really, that's our end goal, is to get those numbers up. And so each year, I think, in all of the programs, we'll be able to request and require that we receive all of those metrics. So we can really make changes and tweak that. And then another metric we can use is participation. We do set out rate counting right now for the curbside cleanup program, so we'll continue to do that. And then we can also continue to, or start tracking the participation in these new program elements. And then lastly, of course, we can track the cost of the programs to make sure that we're really seeing a reduction as we've anticipated.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Baloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo what's been said, but I won't repeat it. I do have a question about cost and staffing. I see that the recommendation is, is to continue the current rates that are being charged for curbside cleanup into 2022. And frankly, I'm surprised at that. So could you kind of flesh out why we're doing that?
Well, sure. Councilmember Baloga, Mayor. We decided to stick with the same rate for this year because we are not 100% certain about all of our costs at this point in time, particularly for that component where we would do the reuse pickup at the curb. We know that that part will need to go out for bid. And we are, we've talked with some potential vendors to get estimated costs on that, but we don't have a final hard and- and fast number. We also anticipate this being a year when we will offer the curbside cleanup with the reduced amount of items accepted. So we know that that will be a part of our costs, and we also will be incorporating in a drop-off event. So for this year, we thought we wanted to keep the rate steady for people, recognizing that potentially next year, when we aren't offering the pickup portion of the event and have a better sense of what those rates will be for handling the reuse and recycling materials, then we can better refine what that reduction will be for residents.
Thank you. Second part is staffing. This seems like it's something that would run pretty much on its own. You know, I'm sure we'd get calls when the voucher system comes in place and certainly before that, you know, as we always have, about what can be put out and what can't and that type of thing. But can you talk about what the needs for headcount underlies that request?
Sure. Mayor Bussi, Councilmember Beloga. We have put a request in our 2022 budget for a halftime utility billing...I can't remember the title of specialist.
Yes.
I think it's a utility billing specialist in our utility billing office to assist with what we presume will be some increased phone calls and increased questions about the program as it proceeds forward. That's the only staffing that we have recommended for the program at this point in time. Again, that might be...need to be evaluated as the program continues, but we estimate that it could be pretty readily handled with that amount of staffing.
So, question for the manager then is, is each of those items, cost and staffing, will come up again when we do the fees later in the year and approved budgets later in the year? So this item is...the approval of this item, rather, is standalone to the concept of the Sustainable Bulky Item Management Plan, not the addition of staffing nor the cost to be charged. Is that correct?
Mr. Rugi?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Beloga, that is correct. We are not assuming that the new staffing requests related to this are approved by virtue of giving this approval tonight.
Thank you for that clarification. That's what I assume, but I just assume it gets one in trouble at times. So, thank you for the information.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. Council, anything? Any other questions on this? I see none. So the suggested action is seeking direction. Are we looking at a possibility to approve this tonight, or do we want to say we would like to approve this and bring this back next week? What would work best here?
If you're ready to approve it tonight, we would be happy to have you do that.
If there is...and I think we would be very happy to do that. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't stepping on anybody's toes here from a process standpoint. Council, I think we've all expressed our satisfaction and our approval of this, and I think if we could look to move forward with this and get this underway officially, I think this would be the opportunity to do so. So I'd look for action here. Councilmember Belo...Councilmember Loman?
So I imagine we need some type of motion to do that.
That's what I'd be looking for.
All right. Let's see here. I'll go ahead and move that we commence with the Sustainability Bulky Items Management Program.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember Martin. By commence, I think you mean approve and recommend moving forward on the Sustainable Bulky Item.
I will accept that, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, remember, as a point of clarification, do you also...I anticipate contracts, contract amendments related to this. Is the motion also authorizing the mayor and the city manager to enter into any contracts that arise out of this approval?
I guess I hadn't considered that as part of this. If I think, if that makes prudent...if it's prudent to do that now, I think, yes, if Councilmember Loman would be willing to accept that as part of the motion as well.
Yeah, whatever it would take to get this thing to move forwards. I don't know if there's that, and there's more items that need to be added to this motion. I would look to add that now rather than waiting.
Mr. Rugi, anything?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, appreciate the comment by the city attorney. That's standard practice when we approve these types of programs. So if anybody's watching, I don't want them to think that we're assuming anything else beyond the approval. If council wishes to see the contract before we approve it, that's certainly within your purview.
So you're good with that, Councilmember Loman?
I'm good with that as long as...second.
You're good with that? I'm good with that. So to restate, you're moving that we commence with, we move forward with the Sustainable Bulky Item Management Plan and exactly what were the...
Authorize the city manager.
And authorize the city manager and the mayor to...
Enter into contracts that are consistent with the Sustainable Bulky Item Management Plan.
Is everyone clear on what we have talked about thus far? Everybody clear on that? It's clear as we're going to get. Very good. We have a motion and a second on this.
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Mr. Brillert? Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
And Bussi?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Very well done. Very impressive with this and impressed at the process to get to this point. So thank you for that work on that. Well done.
Thank you.
I believe that is our last opportunity for public comment, and that being the case, Riza, thank you very much for your help this evening. I believe you can log off and go. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening. We will move on to item 8.2, which is Board and Commission Process Improvement Update. Emily Larson, our Community Outreach Engagement Specialist, is here or online. I thought she was.
Online.
Online. There she is. Who's going to lead us through this?
Good evening.
Good evening, Emily. Welcome.
Councilmembers. Good to be with you tonight. I am here to provide an update for you about the Board and Commission Process Improvement work. So I was here back in August to talk about this exact topic, and during that time, we've done some work to honor the feedback that you provided and make some changes to next steps and approaches moving forward. And so tonight, what I will do is introduce a pilot plan for upcoming Board and Commission appointments. The purpose of that plan is to help us work through some of the suggested changes that we have proposed and shared as recommendations, and to use that experience to then shape a final policy, which we would revisit in the spring of 2022, rather than having you implement a policy before we practiced. There are two pilot plans that I'll be reviewing, and the reason behind that is, as we discussed back in August, there are some nuance to our board and commissions. So some are established by state statute, others are established in our city code. And so with the upcoming schedules that we had for appointments, it made sense for us to approach two different plans. And I'll explain that here in a moment. And then because we'll be opening the application here shortly, I'd like to review that application with you, see if you have any questions or comments about the application. We'll clarify some next steps and then allow time for questions and discussion. And during that time, if there are any questions about the topic of Board and Commission decorum, I will defer to the city attorney and the city manager to help work through those questions as well. So the first pilot plan to review pertains to the HRA Commission, and this group of individuals, they have terms that end on December 31st each year. So this year, that's why you see the two different timelines for the pilot plans. And so we did some connecting with legal last week to talk about some proposed changes and do our due diligence to make sure that we weren't out of line with what state statute would guide us to do. And so we're working this week to open a application for the HRA Commission. We will do that here in the next couple of days, and so the application's ready to go. I'll review in a moment, and it's just a matter of making it accessible for the public on our website and other means. And then we'll be implementing a recruitment plan starting as soon as the application opens this week and wrapping up on October 31st, which is the application deadline. That deadline was set to allow time for interviews, and in this case, those conducting the interviews are proposed to be staff from the HRA and the chairperson from the HRA Commission. And so that would take place the week of November 8th and November 15th, and the interviews would then...the interviewers would develop a report, bring it to the HRA Commission for recommendation, and upon approval, that recommendation would then be provided to the mayor. And in this case, appointments would be made on December 6th, and with the HRA, we have appointments made by the mayor with approval by the city council and new terms beginning January 1st, 2022. So similar process to what we've done in the past with a couple additions that look a bit different than what we've seen previously with the HRA Commission. And the rationale there is that we've received some feedback from staff and from members of the commission that it's really important to have voices for those who sit around the table, involved in the appointment process. And so the purpose there is really to help meet the need of the commission at hand by leveraging their perspective in the process of putting together a recommendation. The second pilot plan that we have been putting into place is around what I call the Big Five. So this is where we see our biggest pool of applicants, for the Advisory Board of Health, the Creative Placemaking Commission, the Human Rights Commission, the Parks, Art, and Recreation Commission, and the Sustainability Commission. And these are groups that have terms beginning March 1st each year. And so what we're looking to do is, well, first, we connected with the EMT, our executive team, to have some discussion about this plan, received some feedback and comments. And then after tonight, if, as we go through the application, if we see a need to make any adjustments to the application, we would need to submit that for review. And so you'll see that date, suggested date, indicated here to allow our legal department enough time to review that. Also, during the month of October, we will be establishing an interview date and a selection committee for walking through these five openings. If you look down the list here, you'll see that interviews are proposed to take place in January. And so part of the reason why you see this item number three here establish the date and committee is to provide that transparency to applicants before we open the application so people know, okay, there's interviews involved, this is when they'll take place, and this is who will be conducting them. And so I won't be asking for action around that specific area tonight, but rather providing a heads-up to the group to recognize that we'll be asking you to indicate if you'd like to participate in the selection committee and help out by interviewing candidates in January. Those dates, we're also working through, just making sure we don't have any conflicts with some other things that go on with the city council, such as some dates around this community-based strategic planning project. So that's why you don't see the specific date indicated in January at this time, but we will let you know when we come back and ask who would like to be involved in the selection committee. One thing I'll also point out there is the way the draft policy language is written now, it states that we will establish in a selection committee and that all city council members are invited to participate in that process, but it doesn't stick us into every city council member having to participate in that process. So everyone has the opportunity, but if there are those who don't have capacity, maybe that's not a good time, there's not an interest in participating. It's not a requirement, but rather an invitation that we would conduct a process each fall to confirm who would be participating on that committee from this city council body. And then also, we'll be connecting with boards and commissions to specify which representative from their group will participate, with the recommendation being that the chairperson from each board or commission that has openings is invited to participate, unless that person is seeking reappointment, in which case the group would appoint a different representative for that process. To aid the selection committee in their work in January, we'll be developing a facilitation guide for a debrief meeting. And so the rough structure that we know for the interview process is that we're intending to interview everybody in the same day, trying to set one date as to not burden applicants and selection committee members with multiple days where you would need to come in and participate in that process. And part of that day would then involve a debrief at the end of the interviews to generate data, to come up with a recommendation that would then be shared with the full council. And so while we're developing the guide, we'll also be working to open the application, and that will take place November 1st. So we'll transition from the HRA application opening to have the application reflect the openings for the five boards or commissions involved in this pilot plan. Also, new to the approach this year, we're looking to offer virtual information sessions for interested applicants, so we can walk through the application and provide some guidance as far as, you know, hey, here's how to fill it out, this is what our city council often looks for. We hear from this group often that it's really helpful for those making decisions around appointments to have really specific information about why that individual is interested in that specific board or commission, so we'd be able to share some of those things. But ultimately, when we've done surveys in the past about our application process, we hear positive feedback about the ease of applying and the way the online application works. And so it's more so about really helping people put themselves out there as a strong candidate for a board or commission. So that's new to the plan this year. We look to close the application on December 22nd, 2021. So that is a Wednesday. It's prior to the holiday season, and it allows us enough time then to turn around and coordinate interviews in January. So that's what you see next. The interview process would then lend to a report generated, which would specify which candidates are being recommended, and then we'd look to the city council to make appointments on either February 7th or February 14th, depending on how the process plays out. Part of that depends on when we're able to do the interviews and allowing enough time in between. But we are looking to make those appointments a few weeks earlier this year per request by our staff so that there's enough time to properly welcome the new members to boards and commissions before their terms begin on March 1st. And then the last few things reflect the notion of this pilot plan. And so the purpose of doing this is to not wait another year until we implement some of these changes that we've been discussing, but rather try them out, reflect, make adjustments in February and March, submit that policy for review and approval by legal as part of our standard process would go, and then look in the spring of 2022 to formally adopt a board or commission policy that would reflect the key learnings that come out of the pilot and then also provide us with that clarity and transparency to move forward with something that we have in writing and we can really lean into as we work for clarity in our process. So at this time, I'm going to transition my screen here, if you could be patient for just a couple seconds, to walk through the board and commission application. It's something that we have online, and that's a relatively recent process improvement that took place shortly before I started helping out with the coordination of this, but we have an online application, which is great. We use our volunteer database called Volgistics to implement that, and part of the benefit there then for the city is that we have a really nice way to be able to pull data and analyze data about who's applying for boards and commissions, different information about their background, whether it's where they live in the city, there's a code, or optional demographic questions that we ask. And it's also a nice way for us to be able to make adjustments efficiently and effectively in between so that when we have applications for one board or commission, we can quickly turn things around for the next round that comes after. And then just to highlight again, we'll be having virtual information sessions this year. Those dates are still to be determined as we work to coordinate with others involved in the application process for what I call the Big Five. And so moving on to the application, I will...I'm going to pull it up directly from the website. So this is our Board and Commission application form. I'm going to walk through what it looks like now, reflecting some of the upcoming openings, and point out some of the things that remain the same as we move through. So we always have a data privacy notice at the top. we always have a data privacy notice at the top of our application. And we have it on here actually a few different times to make sure people understand how their data will be used. And then just recently, the, um, the software program that we use for this has allowed us to include more text and hyperlinks on our application. So we've built it up a bit, um, just in the past month or so. And so we include a call out for where the city has openings for boards and commissions. We specify the deadline and we've added descriptions of each group. Um, specifically in this case, because we see a little bit of a difference from our, um, Housing and Redevelopment Authority Commission and our local border review, um, just a different process for, um, appointments and, um, different statutes and things that set those groups up. This statement at the bottom, uh, visit BLM dot M N slash boards for more information or subscribe for updates. That stays on this form, uh, when we have openings and when we don't have openings. And it just allows people, um, with some clarity on how they can find more information. Um, especially if we're not, uh, accepting applications at that time. I do receive some questions in the off season asking about when we'll open things and, um, and when people can expect to be able to apply. So we've seen some response to that. So from here, the application is fairly basic. We ask for contact information and then we ask our optional demographic questions around race and ethnicity, age range and housing status. Um, those are things that have been added. Race or ethnicity, I think was added in 2018. And then age range and housing status was added in 2020. And so we're still building up our data around those areas. But, um, each year we get more and more data, which has been really great to see and track our progress in recruiting a diverse pool of candidates. Um, so we compare not only the applicant pool, but also those who are appointed with the data that we collect. And then we ask to select the border commission you're interested in serving on. And so we are able to customize this, so it only has options for those that have openings. And then we have three basic areas of questions. The first is to please describe your interest in serving on the particular border commission you're applying with and what assets or expertise you bring to that group. So we do ask that people are specific. So if they want to apply for two boards or commissions, that's okay. Um, but they do have to complete a separate application for each. Um, in the case that maybe that doesn't work out the way it's supposed to. I do see every application that comes in, and if there's any problems with, um, the way something is submitted, I follow up with those individuals directly. We also ask about educational background. So people can choose their level of education and provide a description of, um, of what their experience and background is. And then we ask people to, they can indicate their employer name and where they're located. And then to describe any professional or volunteer experience that relates to the board or commission they are applying for. Um, we've received some comments from this group about resumes. Um, so I haven't made any changes at this time about an optional resume coming, um, as alongside this application. I did receive some feedback from HRA staff indicating that they like to see resumes. Um, and so it's a change I have not made, but I know we have, um, heard that up for debate with this group. And so it's definitely something that we can talk about further while I'm here with you this evening. Um, recently we translated all of the, the text at the bottom here. So we have English, Spanish and Somali for things like please submit an optional resume. We have our ADA statement and then we have the data privacy notice again in multiple languages. And then what happens when people submit their application is it comes to our database, uh, I receive an email notice. And, um, and then I'm able to follow up with applicants when the deadline passes to let them know what to expect moving forward. So that concludes the overview that I have for you this evening to spark our discussion. Um, and at this time, I'd like to open things up to you, council, um, and begin just by asking, are there any questions that are jumping out at you?
Thank you very much. Counsel, has this sparked any questions? Any? Councilmember Beloga and then councilmember Carter. Councilmember Beloga.
Uh, thank you. Emily, thanks for the, uh, good presentation. Uh, gave a lot in a short time there. Going to the HRA, um, you had mentioned that, uh, everyone's term is up at the end of each year. I do not believe that that is the case, or maybe I misunderstood what you had said.
Sure. So Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, I may have misspoke, but there, that is not the case. Um, the HRA this year has two openings or up to two openings. Um, one is actually your term and then the other is another, um, resident whose term is expiring. Um, so in all, in all cases for boards and commissions, we do stagger the terms, so we're not experiencing.
Yep.
You know, having to over leave out once.
Yeah, I just want a clarity to that because I, as you noted, I do serve on that, uh, commission. Have the, uh, chairs of all the boards and commissions been advised of this process? Or how will we bring them into getting input into the process that you're recommending and presenting to us?
Sure. So Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, we have engaged with some, um, current border commission members, not necessarily the chairperson, although many have been involved in hearing an overview of the work that we've been doing and also helping us develop desired qualities for boarding commission members. Um, the, the idea of having them help serve on the selection committee came forward primarily from staff in expressing a desire to have some perspective involved in the process of those who serve on the board or commission, but to not have that come from staff, just trying to eliminate any conflicts of interest there. And so we have not brought that forward to the individual boards and commissions at this time. We're waiting until after discussion tonight.
Okay, but your plan is to do so.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, that is correct.
Good, okay. Uh, thank you, because having served on many and been the chair of, uh, uh, several, uh, I, I think involvement in this process is, uh, crucial to, uh, getting it accepted and making it really workable. Just two more quick questions if I can, uh. One is, uh, will all app, will anyone who submits an application receive an interview?
Yes. So Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, the current plan for the interviews is that everyone who applies has the opportunity to interview. Those who choose not to would be recognizing that then their only consideration in the process would be the application that they submit.
So it's optional on their part?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And, uh, lastly, uh, you didn't, uh, uh, I, or I didn't catch it at least, uh, uh, talk about, uh, our expectations of appointees, um, and, uh, what their requirements are. So, uh, things like what's the date of the meeting, the time of the meeting, the place of the meeting, um, that they have a, a attendance requirement of 75%. Uh, those kinds of things, I expect that, uh, that's given in advance. Is that going to be true?
Um, yes, Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, are you referring to, um, letting applicants know what the requirements are to serve on the border commission?
Well, uh, what our expectations are, yes, that, uh, you know, they are available, that they're going to be, uh, required to attend through a year, 75% of the meetings and so forth. Yes.
Yes. So Mayor and Councilmember Beloga, we do, we do include that information when we recruit for board and commission applicants. And so for most boards and commissions, that, that is the primary requirement is that you're a Bloomington resident and you attend 75% of the meetings. And then if there are additional requirements, we specify that as well in the recruitment information.
Okay, cause I, I know that, uh, we've all had some appointments who, when they get appointed, say, oh, well, that's on a date when I can't, uh, I'm not available. And, uh, uh, I go to Florida for, you know, six months out of the year during the winter and blah, blah, blah. But, uh, so the, the more we can weed that out and make that aware uh, on the website to all applicants as they're filling out the application, I think is advisable. But, uh, thank you for the time.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Emily. This is really fantastic and it's really exciting to see where we've come over the last year and a half, um, in these conversations. So I just have a couple of questions. Um, I really appreciate kind of the detailed, um, process that you outlined in the pilot plan, the slide that has the pilot plan on it for the big five, I think you call them. And I don't see anything in that about the kind of interview framework itself and the questions. So I just have questions, um, around, uh, like the interview format and will there be standard questions across interviewees or will we have kind of a section of the interview where we can ask questions that we might have that popped out on their application? Um, and of course, thinking about that through a lens of fairness and wanting to make sure that, you know, we're not, um, kind of asking more of some candidates than others. So I guess I'd be curious to know what your thinking has been around the interview itself.
Sure. So Mayor, Councilmember Carter, we have talked in the policy development about having a standard set of questions that is asked. Um, I will say that, uh, in the month of October, we're looking to develop that facilitation guide and dig into more of what the interview would look like. And so if there are suggestions from yourself or from others in this group, I welcome and encourage them. Um, but we are looking at doing really fast-paced interviews. Um, so 10 to 15 minutes is what we're looking at, just by way of knowing that we will likely receive anywhere from 65 to 85 applicants based on, uh, recent history. And so, yes, a standard set of questions is something that we are looking at as well as a standard, um, timeframe. But also trying to balance that notion of, you know, what if there's something specific somebody wants to ask based on the information provided? So a lot of that is still open for suggestion and this information will continue to update you with.
Okay, that's very helpful. Um, and then in the, kind of the portion of the plan where there's the reflecting and making adjustments, I assume that you'll also kind of be engaging, um, the variety of stakeholders that are involved in the process. So possibly the board and commission chairs or maybe asking a couple of the interviewees to, or the applicants to provide feedback or the council to be, provide feedback.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Carter, that is correct. Uh, we do have a bit of time to formulate what that looks like, but, um, last year we implemented our first survey of applicants, which generated a lot of really helpful feedback for us around the process. And so we will do that again, as well as engage those who were actively involved in letting us know how things went. Um, having further discussion, you know, if not all council members are able to participate, uh, bringing discussion back to the group still, uh, during that time to make sure that people are comfortable with the process that's outlined in the policy and the language that we use. And so that's really where I'll be looking for your voices to indicate the changes and the things that we need to make so that everyone's comfortable.
Okay, great. That is all of my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Well, thank you, Emily. This, this is really, really good. Is, this is one of the first issues that I really identified when I was serving on the council that I wanted to take a look at. So I'm, I'm really, really hurting to see this progress. Um, just a couple of quick questions here. Looking at the plan for the HRA Commission, I'm, I'm seeing that it, it states appointments by a mayor, approval by the city council. Was that just something that we've missed for the past few years? Because I don't recall when we've done HRA appointments and it's been that way. I don't know if that's a question for you or the city manager or?
Mr. Broogie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, those bodies are actually, um, mayoral appointments and, uh, we ask the council to confirm the mayor's appointments.
So we've, we've just been basically doing it wrong for the last few years?
No, that we've, we've actually been doing it in that manner.
I don't, maybe it's just been so long since I've done an HRA appointment. I don't remember that though. I remember us, I thought I remembered us casting votes and, and picking people for the HRA. But anyway, anyway, that's neither here nor there. Okay. Um, I'm, I'm assuming, and I, I'm asking you to tell me if I'm correct in this assumption, that the selection committee members will, I mean, this will be a series of committees, correct? It's not just one committee that interviews all 60 to 80 applicants?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Coulter, the, right now what we're looking at is simultaneous, um, interviews. And so what we would first do is ask for the city council and chairpeople to indicate if they're able to participate. And then we would confirm who that group is. And then we won't know specifically what the simultaneous interviews will look like until we see the applicant pool come in in December. And we can see the distribution from the different boards and commissions. So for example, last year we had one border commission that likely would have had their own committee versus another, um, another couple that could have been done together just based on the numbers that came forward. And so we'll confirm that information between the date of the deadline and the date of the interview process.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's good to know. Um, the only, I guess I wouldn't even, I'm not going to ask this as a question, but perhaps a comment. I noticed that the, um, the selection committee members discussion is set for October. Um, some of us, I mean, there, there, I, let me rephrase that, there is an election this year. Um, and we will not necessarily know the makeup of the city council in October. In fact, I would say we won't because, you know, election date. Um, is, I mean, has there, is there any thought, maybe this is a question, is there any thought to, uh, potentially having that discussion after the election? So there's a little more certainty around that?
Yep. Mayor and Councilmember Coulter, um, what you're pointing out is the interviews for the HRA Commission. And I should have specified this in the materials, but what we're looking for, for the HRA is to have staff and HRA members participate in those interviews rather than the city council. And then a recommendation would be developed and, and confirmed by the HRA Commission before being brought forward to the mayor who makes the appointments for the HRA.
Sure. I'm, I'm also seeing this in the, the, the big five pilot plan. It says establish interview date and selection committee members in October. Is that something different than what I'm understanding?
Sure. Yep. Councilmember Coulter, you are correct. Um, that is listed there and perhaps that's just something we need to work through. You know, we, I appreciate you pointing that out. It is not something that I had considered in the dates. I was more thinking about, um, trying to prioritize when we have that application launch on the first. And so I will take that comment and look to make some adjustments based on, on what makes the most sense with the election taking place in November. So thank you.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Also, anything else? Councilmember Loman?
Again, uh, everyone also thanked you and I'll thank you again. I'll leave it at that. So just, uh, four quick ones here. So I'm, I was looking at the form itself and, um, I'm wondering if, uh, yeah, if staff is interested or open to the idea of possibly having, uh, the commissions look at those application forms themselves and then do some revision. I don't know if we have a technical ability to do that, uh, where we get some feedback from commissions and kind of those commissioners that are already there and say, hey, uh, these are a couple of questions that I wish I would have had to fill out, uh, when I was applying for, let's say for the sustainability commission, uh, or for, uh, human rights. Uh, any thinking around that or, or has that been considered or is that something we could look at in the future? Um, are there any limitations from a technology standpoint?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, that is not something that had been considered thus far. And we do see from our most recent applicant pool, we saw a lot of positive feedback about the application itself. Um, and since boarding commission members haven't been actively engaged in the selection and appointment process in the past, uh, we haven't sought out that feedback. We've more so looked to this group. Um, also in recent years, we've looked to streamline the application to try to make it as, um, as easy as possible for somebody to fill out. And so that's why you see just a couple of questions reflected there. Um, with that in mind, there, it's open for, um, for your suggestions and I'll definitely note down, um, the desire to engage others and boards and commissions in that process. From a technology standpoint, it's really simple to add a question to the application. We're able to update the form and keep all of the data collection and, and the data analysis intact. And so we could, um, just add another section with open-ended questions. It's pretty, pretty straightforward to do with the program that we use.
And I do, I do know that, uh, just from my interactions with the sustainability commission and, and the kind of the expertise that we kind of look for, there, there may be a need there. And I, I would just be very interested to see what our, our chair and what other commission members would, would think, uh, given the, the, the technical nature of some of our, our work. So, um, and maybe that isn't necessary for some of the other commissions, but, uh, uh, wanted to, to just throw that out. Um, just a few other items here. Um, is there any concern that, uh, from the staff's perspective, that if the chair isn't there to kind of give, uh, their feedback, uh, during that appointment process, I understand the conflict of interest, that you might get a different level of, uh, of, uh, feedback? How, how would we deal with that? I just, just curious what staff thought about that. I, I realize there's a conflict there, but, uh, talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So Mayor, Councilmember Loman, the, right now. So Mayor, Councilmember Loman, the, right now, what's being proposed is to first invite the chairperson into the process. If that person's either not able to participate or running for, or looking to be reappointed, we would ask the border commission to appoint another representative from their group to serve on the selection committee. So whether that's somebody else from the executive committee or just another member, the goal would be to have representation from each border commission involved in the committee.
Just going, jumping to the, the application itself, would there be any possibility of bringing forward those folks who have served on the Bloomington Learn to Lead? Would there ever be a checkmark that we consider so that those who are looking at the application or council members or the mayor would know very easily that these folks, you know, took some extra time to participate in that program?
So Mayor, Councilmember Loman, yes, that is something from a technical standpoint that we could add. There have been just different perspectives over time about the Bloomington Leadership Program and the connection to border commission appointments. And so we haven't done anything formal in the past, although we are open to doing so. When we, when we promote boards and commissions to our alumni or current members of the program, we do strongly encourage them to indicate that they are alumni or current participants. But that doesn't mean that everybody does when they talk about their interest in serving or some of the other opportunities to add that information. So it's definitely a possibility, technically speaking. It would be a simple addition and something that we can consider for the coming year.
And I know for myself, it's just difficult to go back and grab those lists of people. It'd just be nice to have one way to kind of easily know if this person participated that. And then finally, just one other, I don't know if it's a, it's a question or a suggestion, but one of the things I think would be interesting to try to find out is if during the interview process that we give applicants maybe one question ahead of time that they could, could fill out and be ready and prepared for, for those of us who are not as extemporaneous in terms of our, of our background. So just wondering if that would be something we may consider for those who prepare differently. Thank you.
Well, Councilmember Loman, you bring up a number of good points. I, I guess, when we started this discussion, I mean, I, I've always kind of looked at this. This is basically a job interview. And we've got to find a sweet spot between, you know, a rigorous job interview and basically, you know, click a box and you're, you're interviewed for the position. And I think there's got to be a, there's got to be a sweet spot in there, somewhere in between. And, I mean, I applaud you, Emily. I think you've done that. You've done a nice job here trying to find that, that spot and trying to find that balance, whether it's with the information provided. I'm glad to hear that you're doing counseling sessions or helping folks who might need help filling out an application like this. And I'm assuming that would then also apply toward resume building and doing that type of thing as well, trying to put that, that kind of information together. So it's, I mean, the questions you bring forward, yes. On the Sustainability Commission, we do, in fact, oftentimes look for those that, that environmental knowledge and expertise. And so perhaps there'd be a way to, beyond a resume, a way to identify that or, or look at that. But as I said, ultimately, it's, it's a job interview, and we want to use it to, to find the best possible people for our boards and commissions here in the city of Bloomington. And I think, based on looking at what, what we've done for the past 10 years that I've been on the council and, and the process that we're moving forward now, I think we're moving really in a, in a, in a positive direction in terms of doing this in, in a fair and equitable and, and a little bit more rigorous way than we have in the past. And I think it's a, it's a good improvement. I think it's a very good improvement.
Okay. Well, Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for inviting me here tonight, and thank you for your questions and your comments. I know, you know, staff and board and commission members are putting this together. We have our perspectives, but your perspectives as those decision makers and people who are making these appointments is really valuable for us to make sure we're not missing any steps or anything that would be valuable for you. So I, there's another slide in your packet that I'll just highlight verbally here, just that in further encouragement. If you have any other questions or suggestions that come forward, don't hesitate to call me, email me, and let me know what you think. And then we'll continue to provide updates to you, whether it's during a meeting or through the one weekly, to keep you informed on how we move this forward.
Thank you. We, we know where to find you. We can track you down, I'm sure of that. But, but thank you. And if you could pass on our thanks to the other folks working on this as well, because I know a lot of time and effort has gone into this, if you could pass that on, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members.
Thanks. Item 8.3 on our agenda is an update on our tobacco policy. And we have Dr. Nick Kelly from our community, or excuse me, from Public Health, and Carl Henderson, our Community Outreach, our Community Development Director. I'll get, I'll get these titles eventually. We're, we're going so late tonight, so much later than we've gone over the past couple of weeks. I'm just, Dr. Kelly and Ms. Henderson, good evening. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. Tonight, we have a, a brief update on tobacco policy. So if we go to the next slide. As you'll recall, back in 2019, the Advisory Board of Health brought four policy recommendations to the council that were discussed. And on the next slide, we brought them back and discussed them again in June, got some additional direction, and moved that forward with additional feedback from council in, in February of '21. That resulted in the council adopting a policy in April of '21, which restricted the sale of flavored tobacco products effective January 1 of 2022, and capped the, the total licenses of tobacco retailers in June of 2022. That resulted in some additional work from our colleagues in community development.
Thank you, Nick. Good evening. So we had two questions that we wanted to ask our retailers. So what we did is we reached out, we sent out 57 letters. Two were received back. We confirmed that they were no longer in business. We set up two listening sessions in August, and we also set up a page on our Let's Talk for a survey for those who couldn't attend. The Let's Talk survey had 50 distinct visitors. Only two participated in the survey. And our session on August 5th, we had six attendees, and on August 9th, we had four. And so the first question was, what can the city do for tobacco retailers to surrender their licenses early? We collected a lot of information, a lot of feedback, and we put together a matrix that's in your packet that basically talked about what the answer was, the financial impact to the city, the financial impact to the business, public health impact, staff time required, and if a city code amendment was required. And after taking all that information and having numerous calls with our colleagues in public health, we decided that we did not have any recommendations from the matrix on trying to get tobacco retailers to surrender their licenses early. The second question we discussed was, what can the city do to support retailers during the transition? Technical assistance, that's something we already offer to our businesses in Bloomington, Open to Business, a program with MCCD and Elevate Business, part of Hennepin County. The other suggestion that came up during this dialogue was, would the city allow food trucks at these establishments? Talking to Glenn, we know that the ordinance is complete, and we were waiting for city council direction on scheduling. And then another suggestion that came up was allowing electric vehicles, electric vehicle charging stations. And so, and if the city could assist with that. And right now, we are watching for grants, including $68 million of the President Biden's infrastructure package that will come to the state of Minnesota just for EV infrastructure. And so we're just going to wait to see if that comes to fruition. And so that's the conclusion of our update. Wanted to open it up for any questions and comments.
Also, questions on this? I, I appreciate the, the outreach that you have done and did do to the retailers, and appreciate the feedback that they did provide. And understand the, the lack of recommendation for anything off that matrix. I just, in looking at it, I had a hard time myself thinking of anything that made logical or financial or economic or, or practical sense to, to try and implement. So I, I think you make the, your recommendation there, I think, is spot on in terms of what we can, what we could or could not do in terms of helping, or either to get them to surrender or to get, you know, to help their transition. So, council, anything? Comment here? Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, I'd just like to say that, first, I want to thank staff for their willingness to meet with these retailers and for doing additional research. I'd like to, I'm working on something, and I'd like to bring it back later on, at a later period of time. Not appropriate at this time to, to discuss that. But again, I do want to thank staff for their, their tireless and hard work on this. I know our, our priority has always, has been around this public health, this idea of trying to, as we always have, trying to reduce cigarette smoke and tobacco in our community, and really provide for those folks who are most vulnerable in our, our community around that. And so again, I, I thank not only our, our staff, but also our council for really being leaders in the community around those particular issues.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, excuse me, just a quick question here. So just so I'm clear in understanding this, with regards to electric vehicle charging stations, the feedback you heard was, for lack of a, sort of a better term, businesses were looking for financial support in constructing them, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I figured. My recollection is that we have already adopted city code around EV charging stations and, and all of that. I guess my question is, is there anything, you know, beyond what we have done in terms of city code or allowances or whatever it is, that could potentially obviously not provide sort of a direct financial assistance, but could potentially just make that infrastructure easier for folks to put into place? Has that been discussed at all?
So I apologize. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, what we heard were the businesses were looking for financial assistance in installing the electric vehicle stations. And that's something that we don't have a funding mechanism right now for.
Yes. Okay. So I, that, that was the part I got. I guess my question beyond sort of the, the financial assistance, is there, I mean, is there something that we could do, maybe as an amendment, a change to city code or something like that? Or even, you know, could there be discussion about something like that so that it wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't be a financial incentive or, or assistance, but something that would at least make it a little bit easier for that infrastructure to be put in place? Has that been discussed at all?
So I apologize. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, we have not discussed that with the individual retailer, but that is definitely a possibility. There were a number of things that people asked about if we could amend. There's one retailer that's currently in a residential zoned location, and he asked, could, you know, the city look at amending the code to allow, you know, him to expand his business there? So we, yes, we could definitely look at those if there's appetite from this body.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, you know, understanding everything else you have on your plate, I don't want to, you know, put too much else on there, but I, I think to the extent that we can get at kind of those other things that aren't necessarily sort of direct financial contributions to things, to provide some assistance, I, I think certainly think that's a conversation worth having.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess this might, maybe just as much for my council colleagues as, as staff, but I just, I really appreciated the, not only that you sat down with the retailers these couple of times in August, but just this kind of general list of feedback, because obviously the ordinance is what it is, and with the matrix we've got, there's only so much you can do. But just making sure, it feels like we have a really robust community outreach and engagement plan around a lot of our larger initiatives. But just as we're looking in years to come at ordinance changes or whatever it may be that expect, that affect various specific parts of our business community, that we're getting sheets like this with all these bullet points before we're voting on the ordinance. So just have to think about moving forward.
That makes sense. Council, anything else? So no, I think the, the request here was for direction. Now, Councilmember Loman, you said you had some things that were being considered. You weren't necessarily in a position to talk about them right now. I don't know that we, you know, we're, we're not under a time crunch here to, to act necessarily. And if we, if we push this out by 60 days, 45 days, something like that, would you have time to, to gather more information if we could then continue this conversation and, and listen to what you have to say, and then, and then continue this conversation from here? Would that be doable?
Yeah, I think that's very doable. I mean, it could be beyond 60 days. I just want to make sure, get a good proposal, get it before you, kind of last, last opportunity here to, to do anything around this particular topic. I think we have spent a lot of staff time on this, and we've got a number of other things that are coming up. Councilmember Coulter talked about that. And so I just want to be sure that, that we are diligent with our time that we have here at council. And, and I don't want it to go so far out that we've forgotten this conversation, the work that's been done here.
So I will trust and I will rely on you, councilmember, to, to bring the information forward, perhaps to, to work through the city manager that we can then consider as we continue to move this forward, if we have any additional items that we want to talk about, that you, you not only fill in some of those blanks, but we find the time to talk about them as well.
I appreciate that, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else to discuss on this one, council? Anything else to add?
No, thank you.
Very good. Thank you for sticking with us tonight. Thanks much.
Thank you.
Our final item on the agenda this evening is item 8.4, a city council policy and issue update. Mr. Brugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I got a couple of items for you this evening. First, I just wanted to give you a note that in your one weekly on Friday, we had the draft CIP document that will be discussed next Monday, October 11th, and staff discovered that we had an error in there. So I, you know, I'm sure that some of you were leafing through it a little bit over the weekend here, but you may not have discovered the error. In the PMP Street Reconstruction Project, we inadvertently combined the amount for 2022 and 2031. It got added. So that number showed up as 18 million for next year, when in reality, it's only supposed to be 7.2 million. So if, if you were very studious in getting ahead of your homework for next week, and you saw that large number and wondered why it was so large, we have found that error and we've corrected it. So the updated document will be available by tomorrow afternoon, and it'll be the same link that was included in the info that went out to you on Friday. So if you want to go back in tomorrow evening, leading up to next Monday, the corrected information will be in the CIP. And then the other piece that I wanted to share with you is actually not related to any council work, but related to staff issue. You might remember back in April of this year, our communications department produced a video about one of our police officers, Matt Ryan, who was working through a battle with leukemia. And he had, he had successfully made it through and returned to work as a Bloomington patrol officer, and then unfortunately, the leukemia returned again this summer. And so Matt is working through that, that second bout right now. And mention this because where he's being treated at the University of Minnesota, they get most of their blood supply from Memorial Blood Bank, and they are in desperate need of, of blood and platelets right now. So the, the local Memorial Blood Bank in Bloomington, which is at 500 West 98th Street, is doing a drive over these three days, today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, and they still have openings available. So if folks are interested and able, it's a blood drive in honor of Officer Matt Ryan. They can go over to 500 West 98th Street Memorial Blood Bank Tuesday and Wednesday of this week and help contribute because the need is really severe right now. And anything that we can do to help our coworkers, we'd like to ask the community to help with that, too. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brugge. Council, anything to add? Councilmember Carter?
Just a clarifying question on that. So do people need to schedule a time slot ahead of time, or is it just walk-in?
I think it's best if they do. Thank you, Councilmember Carter. I think it is best if they do go to the Memorial Blood Bank and they can search for a blood drive and look at the ones in Bloomington to see what times are available. I think if they do a walk-in, they'll probably still be able to accommodate. It just may take a It just may take a while longer. Usually, if you're giving blood, it takes about 45 minutes for a scheduled appointment. If you're doing a walk-in, I think there's just an expectation you may have to wait a little bit until they can fit you in to the schedule. And platelets tend to take about twice as long.
Okay, thank you.
Council, anything? I just want to, hats off to staff and everybody who worked on the Old Cedar Avenue Bridge celebration on Saturday. It was, it was a great time. We had a great turnout, wonderful energy, just a lot of fun down on the river bottoms until the rain came. But it was very, it was very nice, it was a very nice celebration. And so hats off to the staff who did work on that and who made that happen because it was, it was a lot of fun. So thank you so very much. And the hits just keep on coming. So it's National Fire Prevention Week and this Saturday, we have our fire department open houses from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM this Saturday. It's food, fun, you can crawl over the top of a, a fire truck and I believe snowplows as well because, because, snowplows. And staff will be on hand, people will be around to talk. And over at Fire Station 4, I know they're doing a, a kind of a briefing or information about the new proposed fire station for, and they're going to do that from 10 until noon. So if you have time, get to the farmer's market early on Saturday and then get over to the, your local fire station and enjoy Fire Prevention Week. So, anything else? Hearing nothing, council? I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Coulter to adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no further, council discussion. Mr. Brillard.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Bussy.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned for this evening. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Thanks to the staff who presented. Thank you, council. Thanks to everybody who participated. Have a great evening. Good night.
Bye, folks.